Lee down with that.
Well, see, you know we've arrived when we all wear the same color each week.
All right, it looks like we're ready to go. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 14th, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting. First, I'd like to confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Thank you. Before we go into the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, I did want to draw your attention to the fact that thanks to Commissioner Davis here, we all have flags at our places in acknowledgement that today is Flag Day and actually this week is nationally, it's National Flag Week. So, thank you to Commissioner Davis for recognizing that fact, and I would like to read the proclamation that was put out by the US government to celebrate Flag Day and National Flag Week before we do our Pledge of Allegiance, so we can kind of keep that, keep in mind, all of these, all of these reasons why we celebrate the flag. This is June 11th, 2021. "In the midst of a revolution, less than a year after declaring our independence, the Congress consecrated what would become an enduring emblem of American unity by adopting a national flag on June 14th, 1777. In the 244 years since, the United States has grown and changed across the generations, and our flag has changed in turn. The blue field of stars has been enlarged as our union has gained in size and strength. The 13 stripes, symbolizing the original 13 states, have held as constant as the bedrock values upon which our nation was first conceived, the very same values we still cherish and still reach for today. Since adoption of the Stars and Stripes, Americans and people around the world have continuously looked to our flag as a symbol of unity and liberty. Our flag has sailed around the globe, journeyed to the moon, and now to Mars. It has flown on fields of battle and marks the resting places of those who have given what President Lincoln called, quote, 'the last full measure of devotion,' unquote, for our country. Its prominence at civic landmarks and seats of public authority communicates the promise of democracy, that under this flag, the rule of law is supreme and the people reign. As we continue the sacred work of building a more perfect union together, let our flag serve as a reminder to us and to the world that America stands for and strives for the promise of freedom, justice, and equality for all." To commemorate the adoption of our flag, the Congress, by joint resolution approved August 3rd, 1949, designated June 14th of each year as Flag Day and requested that the President issue an annual proclamation calling for its observance and for the display of the flag of the United States on all federal government buildings. The Congress also requested, by joint resolution approved June 9th, 1966, that the President issue annually a proclamation designating the week in which June 14th occurs as National Flag Week and calling upon all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. So, at any rate, I want to again thank Commissioner Davis for bringing this to our attention, and also to thank all servicemen and women, past and present, for serving with courage and compassion and ensuring that our flag still stands for democracy and freedom and hope across the world. Do you have anything to add, Commissioner Davis?
I think you said it quite well.
Okay. And with that, I would like all who are able to rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance and observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any awards and proclamations today, so that will take us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member here physically or online to offer comments to the, to the city commission. I would ask that you identify yourself and where you're from, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. And with that, is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Yeah, Norman Manaslana, Mayor. I would ask the people to watch the movie We Were Soldiers with Mel Gibson, but you have to watch very carefully at the end of the movie what Lieutenant Colonel Hal Moore said about the flag.
All right, will do. Thank you, Mr. Manal.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you.
Mike Matic, Gipsom, Kansas, and a employee of Salina Regional Health Center for past 30 years, here in support of Salina Media Connection. I understand you're going to be making some decisions regarding some of the funding for them, and wanted you to know all the story behind that. I've actually been involved with either Access or Salina Media Connection from before even Salina Regional, so 30 years. But right now, as a, as a member of the Marketing Department of Salina Regional, we do a show through KSN out of Wichita called The Pulse on every Monday on Good Day Kansas, and we use an amazing facility right here in Salina, Kansas, to tape, tape the show over at, over at Salina Media Connection. It's actually perfect for what we've got, good lighting, good backgrounds and stuff like that. When we switched over to KSN three years ago and doing, doing The Pulse, we were at the time taping the show at our own locations, and always a little different, always a little disruption or whatever, and it is so nice to have a facility to be able to do. We do rent, rent the, the facility from them while we, while we do it, so they are recouping some, some funding for it, and we just hate to see that go away. So, just wanted to kind of offer my support and the hospital's support there, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Matic. Appreciate it.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Thad Beach, and I'm 721 Morningside Drive, Salina, and I wanted to communicate my support for Salina Media Connection. I sent you all an email earlier that had some links to programs, community-based programs that, that I was involved with, and I hope you'll get it, take a look at that, but I just think it's a real valuable community resource that a lot of communities don't have, and there's amazing potential and possibilities for involvement and collaboration in the future. So, Salina Media Connection can help all of our missions by showcasing Salina as a visionary city that values and supports the arts, music, sports, its own unique history, heritage, and culture by providing these facilities and the staff for local people to produce their own programs. Most people couldn't afford the really high-tech equipment, but this gives everybody a voice and a chance to do it. That being said, a quality product takes a quality facility, knowledgeable staff. So, the future success of Salina Media Connection's ability to facilitate the creation of community program is tied to having a budget that takes into consideration being able to hire and retain top-notch employees that can see everyone's vision to fruition. So, I would hope that you would fund SMC to the fullest extent possible, and next year, everybody can look back and say, wow, I'm glad we supported that, and say, that was a real surprise. Look at all the strides we've made. Everybody's been knocked back a little by COVID and getting things done. I know the programs I was involved in, it was pretty challenging to go down there during the height of the restrictions and film things. It was also hindered by the staff hours they had available. So, it does take a lot more time to produce quality programs than just if you shoot one camera and it's an interview with someone. Anytime you do editing, it's just so much more involved and time-consuming, and most video production companies would, it would be very expensive and prohibitive to get the same quality. So, I just hope you'll look into what's being produced and have a good outlook for the future and be able to fund it as much as possible, because I think it's a very unique resource for a community to have, the deal you have with Cox Cable. So, good luck, and I hope you'll support them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beach. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do the virtual folks next. We'll do the people that are here first. Yes, yeah.
Hi, my name is Zaya Markot. I live at 338 West Claflin, Salina, Kansas, here in town, obviously, and I'm here to support Salina Media Connections as well, too. For the past seven years, if not maybe a few more, more months on top of that, I volunteered at Salina Media Connections. When I had actually no outlet as a youngster, because I started when I was like 12 years old, I had no gear, none of that. I was extremely fascinated to make movies at the time, and Salina Media Connections, when my parents couldn't help fund my projects, has always been there, like every time, to help me out with that. And in a way, it's been an incredible, incredible educational experience for me. It was pretty much like the youngsters' film school. I learned a lot. Like, I learned everything I knew about codex, about filmmaking, editing, how to work cameras, everything. Staff was extremely supportive, it was brilliant, like, great. But to get specifically into things, it's, it's helped me make as many projects that I've been able to do to where it's gotten me on my own feet. Without them, I really don't know how far back I probably would have become on, as a filmmaker, as an artist. So, a little bit more, I guess, about me to give you some better context, I, I'm an independent filmmaker, and without the knowledge that I've gained from them, I wouldn't have made it where I am. I feel like I'm repeating myself, but let's get to the point. One thing that I've noticed about just even talking about Access TV to anybody was the incredible fascination amongst young kids myself in it. They were all like, oh, wow, you work at a TV station? I'm like, well, I don't work with a TV station. I volunteer at a TV station. And they're like, that's even better. Is that something that I have to pay for? And it's like, not quite. I mean, you really, like, other than like the 25-year subscription that you have to pay, which is like really nothing in the scheme of things, you can just volunteer right up and, and get started with a TV station. And out of consequence, I've gotten a lot of young people, myself, interested in that whole context. Now, I think the trouble, unfortunately, is just getting the word out about it. Nobody knows about it, and it fascinates me. And if anything, I think it needs help with that. I think that more people who are actually, like, knew about the fact that there's actually just a TV station that they can just straight-up volunteer with, the more you'd gain interest. I think that's really its trouble. But a lot of young kids, I've gotten lots of friends of mine volunteer with the River Festival when that was still going, and that was going strong. I've made tons of TV shows with some good friends of mine. We made some comedy sketches. We went out and did, like, stuff on our own using their own gear. I've made about, probably up to, two feature films and several short films, several, the longest being 12 minutes and right down to like four-minute short films with these guys. And they've taught me as much as I can learn about filmmaking, and it's great. Don't lose it. That's all I'm saying. Time's up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Markot. Anyone else who would like to speak here in person, and then we will turn to the virtual participants? All right, I see Ms. Meyer. Can we, go ahead, Ms. Meyer. You should be unmuted.
Yes, I am. I want to support what the previous speakers were saying about Salina Media. It is so important in my life, in, in the life of our community, and I agree there needs to be more information out about it. And I like to, to have my tax money spent in a healthy, progressive way, and I do feel like the Salina Media is, is the place that we, that I would want some of my tax money to go. I know some of the people there, the dedicated volunteers and such, please, 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 think twice before you do whatever we're concerned about here, and continue supporting the Salina Media and spending my tax money and other tax money on Salina Media. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Ms. Gutierrez, can we unmute her?
Mayor and City Commissioners and residents, hi, I'm Brittany Gutierrez with the Salina Area United Way, and at the Salina Area United Way, we fight for the health, education, and financial stability of all people, and doing work in the areas of education, financial stability, and health. We've had the opportunity through Salina Media Connection, Strictly Salina, to interview nonprofits. So, I get to represent a voice of Salina and have every month a couple of different interviews to different nonprofits, and then that information is shared out in the community, and it's shared out through YouTube. People can send it through their email, through their links, as well as on the Salina Media Connection on their TV channel. And I just wanted to give that kind of report a highlight. If you think that we're doing, you know, 24 last year and 24 this year, I've had the opportunity to be the Strictly Salina host for a couple of years now, so that is another example of information in the community going out in a very structured way, and we always start with what's your why? So, when you think about any nonprofit, anyone that's passionate and, and living through that passionate, what's your why? We've had the opportunity to do that, and I wanted to share that as kind of a report to the commission of what we're doing over at the Salina Media Connection, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Any, any other participants online that you can see? Okay, thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your, your comments and support of Salina Media Connection. I know we all appreciate hearing those, and I think that we're going to look forward to receiving some kind of a proposal. Are we going to receive a proposal from Salina Media Connection before the contract expires?
Mr. Wood.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, thank you, Ms. Cox. All right, that will take us. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that takes us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 7, 2021, and 6.2, authorize the city manager to execute a Smoky Hill River Festival Sound Provider Agreement.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to take off the consent agenda? And if there's not, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2.
Mayor, I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 and 6.2. Before we, we vote, can we go ahead and just do a voice vote, or do we have participants via phone that would necessitate our continuing to do a roll call?
No, we don't have anybody by phone.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, that takes us to administration.
7.1, approve resolution number 21-7966, authorizing the city manager to sign a master equity lease agreement and service agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Mr. Wood.
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. A couple of weeks ago, we had a study session where we talked about the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. It's a program that can help us to replace our entire fleet of vehicles that are one ton and below. It's a lease program. Basically, they use the, the ability of the city's, the city's ability to purchase vehicles with that city discount, and then they maximize resale of those vehicles at a later date, put them on, put the vehicles on a lease program. So, some vehicles will be on a, a short-term lease and some on a little bit longer-term lease, but it will allow us to replace our entire fleet over a five-year timeframe. Lots of benefits to this. There's some cost savings, newer vehicle fleet, reduced maintenance for those vehicles, reduced fuel costs. It'll allow us to kind of get the right vehicles for the right, that we need to do the job that we want to do, and also increase our capacity to use funds to buy other vehicles and equipment outside of the fleet maintenance program. Typically, the city's spending about $300,000 on this, these vehicles annually. We will still be setting that, that fund, those funds aside to spend money on these vehicles, and we also plan to set some money into an account, fleet maintenance account, about a million dollars that we discussed in the study session, to kind of seed that account as we get forward, moving. We plan to replace about 55 vehicles in the next year, and then over the next three or four years, we'll replace all of our 150 vehicles. So, this resolution, all it does is just authorize us to take the next step, sign the agreement with Enterprise. Ken Olson is a representative for Enterprise Fleet Management. He's here if you have any questions for him, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wood or Mr. Olson?
I have just a couple that I was trying to think back on, and forgive me if I overlooked this, but in terms of vehicle condition, when you get ready to cycle those through for the city, and we have a F-150 that is completely beat up, a tree trunk fell on it, whatever, I know that with the open lease agreement, it's certainly not as restrictive, but can you kind of walk me through that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, to start there, there's no penalties for wear and tear. In addition to that, there's no penalties for over mileage or early termination as well. It's all based around the equity. So, if we have a vehicle that's three years old, and we expect it to get $25,000 for that vehicle, well, there's going to be significant, some less equity that's coming back to the city if the vehicle's significantly beat up. We often find that through implementing the newer, more efficient fleet of vehicles and getting out sooner, a lot of times, the vehicles in the government space stay in a better condition than as we see them today when we're running them out 20, 25 years. But there's no penalties for that wear and tear.
Okay.
Any major issue, we also have insurance, so we will, and if a tree falls on it, I mean, a big issue, we're going to have to take care of that like we would anything else. So, you may see some vehicles in our fleet right now that, that may have a, you know, a front bumper that's caved in or something like that, that we just didn't fix because we didn't think it was worth it. We will have to fix those things. I mean, we will anticipate we're going to probably fix more than what we might have in the past. So, insurance, it will go up a little bit. We've run all those numbers, but it's not, not anything significant, so.
Then all, all, I was trying to think, all warranty work would be done through local dealerships? There's no chance of, do we still have all ISE-certified mechanics at the central garage? Okay, three, okay. Is there any chance of any of that work going through the central garage, or that probably wouldn't be a?
That, that would fall into an internal conversation. Typically, we outsource that to the local dealerships, pass that all through as it's covered, as the vehicles are primarily all covered under warranty.
Okay. I don't think I had any other questions.
Just to follow up to that question, if I could, so the routine maintenance, I want to go as base as an oil change, but do you supervise, or do you make sure that this is all being done, or is all that still left to our maintenance department?
Yes, that is all going to stay internal at this time. We do have programs that we can cover the preventative, non-preventative, brakes, tires, everything, but with the current situation that the city has with the garage, we're going to keep that all internal.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments from the public? I didn't see anyone online with their hand raised, so I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 21-7966, authorizing the city manager to sign a master equity lease agreement and service agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7966. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, approve resolution number 21-7964, relating to a special improvement district for water, sanitary sewer, street, and drainage improvements in Wheatland Valley Edition, and authorize the city manager to execute an improvement district development agreement between the City of Salina and Wheatland Development Company, Inc.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This project is, been a long time coming for Mr. Daley. He's got some property on the east side of Markley here, shown by this map, kind of a section of property here just south of the East Crawford Rec area, the ballfield there, just north of the Magnolia Hills subdivision down here. So, he's connecting a piece of property there to, for residential development. This first phase he's requesting is for 29 lots. As you can see, it's got 77 total when you build it all out, but those are the first 29 that he's, that he's requesting to, to do infrastructure financing for. His started in 2018 when he got his plat approved, and then the, the commission approved the developer staff to, to do the petition of feasibility report. So, it started quite a while back, but with the coronavirus and pandemic, Mr. Daley wasn't interested in pursuing it much further at that point, but, and he still had some plans and still working on the plans to bring them forward, and the last few months, it's definitely become a hot topic in Salina to, we need residential housing, and so he feels like this is the right time. One of the things to note with this subdivision is that it is, does have the perimeter road being Markley Road. It is, you know, Markley Road is paved, and it's, it meets the, the interim road standards. And one of the things to, to make sure, I guess, to make it match interim road standards is to put in a sidewalk on one side. So, that's really the only thing that'll have to really happen to Markley Road, and there is currently out there a, a trail along this side from the, from the park along the east side of Markley. So, they'll be able to pave that with a sidewalk, sidewalk to, to match the interim road, street standards for Markley. That was dealt with as well in 2019 with the larger Markley and Holmes and whole benefit district area out there for the perimeter roads. But before you today is just, is the petition of feasibility report for 27, or, I'm sorry, 29 lots, and the lots are currently estimated for assessments at $38,405.55 a piece, which is, I don't know if it's not high, not low, I guess you'd say. It seems like that's been, the, the last few have been similar to that, I guess. And I guess I would stand for, for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. And just to clarify, we did receive an updated agenda item for 7.2, and the only difference between what was originally posted in the packet and what, and the updated version is the, the actual final numbers for the, for the cost of the project. Is that correct?
Correct. The fiscal note, yeah, we had some older numbers there. Mr. Daley has got some contractor numbers, and those were updated over time, and for some reason, they were not updated on the blue sheet, but they're on every other document in the thing, so it's, it's a lot of things to keep track of, and it was a lot of documents, but we have, we believe right on all the three attachments, so at least the math adds up, just not correct in the blue sheet.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Stack?
I don't believe I have one for Mr. Stack, but if the developers here, it would be, kind of like to hear what type of homes are going to be built on this, if we could.
Mr. Daley is here for, for questions?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Hodges. I, um, he went over some of the things on my notes here, so I'll just kind of review them quickly here. As he mentions, the 77-lot development on Markley, Markley Road, and there's 29 lots in the first phase, which is what we're looking at here tonight. The- The covenants for this development will list the minimum home size at 1,250 square feet, and that was intentional to try to target a mid-price range home. Typically, what I'm seeing throughout the marketplace presently in Salina is high, high-end home lots. There's a lot of selection available for the higher-end homes, but there's little or no selection available for a 1,250 square foot home. So we're targeting that market, so we're not competing, all the developers aren't competing against each other, and we can have a selection of new constructions in all price ranges for the buyers in our marketplace that I hear we're going to have coming soon. Told we need 1,000 new houses in a four or five-year period here. We've not built that many homes per year since I've been building. I've been a residential contractor in Salina for 40 years, and we might see 100 to 110 homes, it seemed like at the most, per year, even 10 years ago. So I, I, I think we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, and we're going to need some lots. And I think this, this development with its location and its positive amenities that are structured very close to it, like the Salina Municipal Golf Course in the East Crawford Rec area, which is now, I believe, the Berkeley Family Rec Area. We have Markley Park, which is a well-attended dog park up there. We take our dog there a lot, and a lot of people there. And then also the, the old Elks Golf Course, which is, I forget the name sometimes, Great Life Golf Course and Fitness Center is closed. It's also a readily available location for travel to all sections of Salina, the south section, the central section, and the north section via Markley Road and Crawford and Magnolia. Those roads get people where they're going quickly from this location. And then the 10-foot sidewalk that Mr. Stack mentioned, I think, will be another positive amenity, so people in these neighborhoods can have a place to walk and exercise and go up to, to the amenities I just mentioned. Anyway, I've, I've built homes here for 40 years, and I think this, this is a positive thing for Salina right now, and that's why I'm here tonight. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Will these be on slab, or will they have basement or combination?
They will be combination. They can build slab on grade or basement homes, as long as the minimum ground force square footage is 1,250 square feet, which I think puts these homes a tier lower than the ones next to it at Magnolia Hills. I believe those homes are probably over $300,000 or $350,000 even, some of them. And I think we need mid-price range product in this market, and I think this offers the location for it.
And one other question, these lots will be open to all builders?
Yes, sir. Good point. I had that on my list here. But they will be available to all builders or all individuals. Any parties interested in purchasing a lot from Wheatland Development Company can do so.
How many total acres? I'm sorry.
This phase, sir, is 31 acres, and it's 77 lots. I also have the adjacent, or the connecting 69 acres to the east of it, so there's a lot of room for expansion if this fills quickly, that we can put some of those 1,000 homes we need out there. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Daley? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today. Are there any members of the public that have questions or would like to comment on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, move we approve Resolution Number 21-7964.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7964. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your time. All right, item 7.3.
Item 7.3, approve Resolution Number 21-7957 relating to an establishment of a special improvement district for trail improvements along the east side of Markley Road, required as a condition of the Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two plat approval, and authorize the city manager to execute an improvement district development agreement between the City of Salina and Magnolia Hills Estates, Inc.
Mr. Stack.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Jacob, could you put up the next third page, if you don't mind? There we go. Yep, that's good. Thank you. All right, this is a development that's just south of the one we just talked about. The Magnolia Hills original subdivision here, Magnolia Hills Estates, has been, been there since the mid-2000s and has quite a bit of homes, pretty much, I think it's, it's actually full, I believe. So that one's full. Kelly Dunn and Stan Byquist and their group with James Markle. Phase one is substantially complete here to the east of the original Magnolia Hills Estates. They've completed all, most of the infrastructure to start building houses there. We've had, one of the lots is actually sold. They still have a little bit to do on a detention pond, and one of the requirements for the plat and for the development was a sidewalk on Markley as well. So at the time, we didn't, Kelly, the developers and us, we didn't think about really maybe how to put that in the, in the petition feasibility originally. The previous project we just talked about with Mr. Daley, it's, it's already in there, and we put it in there. But this one, we did not get it in there at the time. The idea was we would partner with the developers in both of these to make it a 10-foot sidewalk. So they were responsible for five, and we'd do the other, other five. In the case, in this case, Kelly Dunn would like to have his contractor that's been working on this construct that. And so with that, we need an improvement district development agreement for him to do that, and for us, the city to then reimburse the amount of proportionate share for that sidewalk. This one's a little trickier because there's an existing subdivision that's been there since the mid-2000s, so there's quite a few lots there. And many, many lots that bond counsel and staff didn't believe that they, you know, there wasn't part of the original plat to construct a sidewalk on, on Markley at that time. So the city's share would have to eat that cost, basically. And then proportionate share for these two phases, phase one and two, the idea with these two phases is they benefit from Markley and anything further east, once they, once they do the rest of the subdivision to the east over to Holmes, and that would benefit Holmes. So the sidewalk would, would be constructed on Holmes when they, when they plat this out. But for these two phases, phase one and two, those lots would benefit from Markley. And so they would get assessed the proportionate share for the sidewalk on Markley. And then in that case, the city would cover the extra five feet to make it a 10-foot sidewalk. So when the math all adds up, it's quite, it's a fairly small assessment, quite a larger, large cost for the city, but it is part of our, kind of our trail system. We've been putting in 10-foot trails for the last probably 10, 15 years or so approximately. And this trail actually has been graded, and, and some rock was put down a few years ago with some of our trail funds to at least get the, kind of the location of where the sidewalk should be, or where the trail should be. And it's been, it's pretty highly used thus far to get this subdivision and anyone else who wants to traverse here to the park, to Barclay Park, to East Crawford. It's been a really nice sidewalk, but it's, or a trail, I should say. The trail is, like any other trail, has some challenges with keeping it graded and the rock and, and the washouts periodically with rain. So it'll be really nice to get this trail paved with 10-foot walk, so we think it'll be a great amenity. Proportionate share for phase one and two here is just around $600 per lot, so it's not a monster share for those, each of those properties to cover. And since they're not even quite done yet with the infrastructure, those assessments haven't actually been finalized, so, you know, there's a chance that it'll be about, you know, not, not much more than was originally in there anyway. And we don't know exactly for sure what the final costs are, so that'll, that'll be determined later, once all this is done. So that's really all I have on that, I guess. Questions? Any further questions, I guess?
That trail, the city put in the existing trail, and that was only, wasn't that just like two years ago?
I was thinking 2019, so yeah, I guess that's, that's really not that long ago. June of 19, fall of 19, yeah, that's a couple of years ago, you're right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So all of that, I mean, it kind of curves around, that's essentially the route of the sidewalk?
Correct.
And that's all just going to be torn right back up? And can we, I guess, recover?
No. You know, it's, we will recover what we can, but it's really, really, it's a good base for the concrete. So a lot of it to the north of Stone Post, the concrete's going to go around on top of it, so it won't be wasted at all. The southern portion is not to the right grade from Brookstone or Brookfield to Stone Post, so it'll have to be cut out somewhat, but we need a, we need the rock base for, for a sidewalk anyway, so we'll have to regrade that and put it back down, and then take whatever's excess. We can use it elsewhere. There's a little bit of cooperation with our guys in the contractor to also go to, we have to go a little further south than is currently there. So we have to go all the way down to the, to the southern end of the subdivision, which is really the pond. So it's quite a ways to the south. Of course, it'll just dead end there, but at least it's sidewalks to nowhere, go to sidewalks to somewhere eventually, so it'll, it'll be, eventually be connected, but that's, we feel like we'll use the rock in a good, good, good spot, just maybe, some of it may have to get wasted in that southern portion. Other questions?
Any further questions or?
I, I just have a question about maybe how we could handle this differently, how other communities were, would handle this, because it's just strange that we have this, those, all these homes between Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two and Markley Road that don't get assessed.
Right.
And I don't believe there's anything we do now, but how would we handle that in the future so that something like, if I own a home in Magnolia Hills Estates, granted, I'm not excited to have something new placed on my, my tax roll, but it just seems awkward. We're jumping all those homes to Magnolia Hills Two and tax, and they're getting hit with an assessment for a sidewalk that they have to go through numerous homes to get to. How, how do other communities, or how would we handle that so that something like that wouldn't happen again?
Well, and I'll try to tackle that, and my answer may be overly frank, but we would have required the sidewalk as a plat condition of those phases of the subdivision. We, and we kind of made a policy change, or at least how we applied ourselves when the subsequent phases came up for approval. And so by imposing the sidewalk requirement, when we did, on the phases that we did, we were picking up in the middle of that development. You know, the other alternative would have been not to impose that requirement at all, to continue to either leave the, the trail there as is or fully funded at city expense. But as we went through that perimeter road conversation and identified, as, as Mr. Stack mentioned, the, the interim street standards, that's when the sidewalk conversation kind of crystallized, and that's why that, the timing was such that it got imposed on the later phases.
And we have taken the steps to make sure this doesn't happen on the eastern half that would benefit Holmes Road, correct?
Correct. Yes, the perimeter street standards that we adopted, go into greater detail about everything from storm drainage to sidewalks and connectivity. And you may recall that we, we recognized we needed an interim street standard, that, you know, if you have a initial development, I should back up. When, when you think about benefit districts, it is an entire area of benefit. And when you talk about a road, it's both sides of the road. So you could have an individual subdivision interested in developing, but they're, they don't represent 100% of the benefit district. It'll pick up the other side of the road and beyond. So as part of our perimeter street standards, we developed an interim road standard, recognizing we kind of needed to incrementally find a way to facilitate that first phase of development and then improve the road to the full standard as development continued. So sidewalks are now in that, that interim street standard so that as we review the plans and we put the benefit districts together, it will be part of the requirements. Previously, that wasn't necessarily the case.
And I guess my second question would be, and you kind of said it, the sidewalk to nowhere, would it be beneficial, and I know it'd probably be at the city's cost, to take that sidewalk all the way to Magnolia Road? It just seems kind of awkward that it just ends there. So if I'm, if I'm riding a bike up Magnolia Road and I get to Markley, I have to, I'm not sure where I can even get on that sidewalk until I get up to the, to the street, that first intersection.
One thing for sure, you'd have to U-turn at Magnolia because there's no place to ride, and, well, people ride on Magnolia, but I wouldn't.
I used to, I don't anymore.
Yeah, I think the, probably the next point of connectivity probably runs all the way back Magnolia and over the bridge, which that's a challenge in and of itself in terms of adding width to that bridge for pedestrian purposes. So I think Commissioner Davis is right, it, there's going to be a dead end somewhere along the way.
Somewhere, I guess, yeah, yes.
Yeah, and lot, or the lot further through the south between Magnolia and the end of this subdivision is not developed. I'm not sure it's platted yet either. I think they'll have the requirement.
Is that, that's commercial, too?
It is, and so they'll have the requirement to construct half of the sidewalk, or five, five-foot sidewalk at that time. So it would be, at some point, we'll at least get a portion of it paid for by the development, if, if we wait.
Yeah.
But as you know, we put in a lot of 10-foot sidewalks along parts of town that we've just paid for with city funds or KDOT funds or whatever. So it's definitely up to you guys, but we, it's like eventually it'll connect, but this one, it could be a while with, like you said, Magnolia Road, challenges getting, getting across there and around there.
If there were an opportunity for a trailhead, that might be, you know, be more appealing. But with it being private property on all quadrants, there's not really that opportunity.
Any other questions? I just, if not, I had one. How did we land on the city at large share being 83.9%?
Well, it's a complex formula here. Let me see if I can get to it. It's in the, in the petition feasibility report, basically there's, if you go to page eight of the petition feasibility report, petition 4411, we, Wayne Nelson is here. Wayne worked a lot on this, and he footnoted basically a one and a two there on our petition feasibility report so we could understand it ourselves, which is helpful for me because I had to ask him that same question Thursday.
I got you. Yeah, I see, okay.
So it was, but I can, it's basically, you know, half of the total cost for the city at large two, which is of course that, the large, half of the, how does it work? Number one is for the existing subdivision, and number two is for half of the, the one we're talking about now, I guess. We tried to highlight it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but just the fact that we are, the requirement of the developer is five feet, we want it to be a hike bike trail at 10 feet, so there's 50% right off the top.
Right, right. I get, yeah, I get the 50% right on top.
Then you end up with the city at large portion of the existing developed part of Magnolia Hills that we didn't impose a plat requirement of a sidewalk on those homes, so we missed the opportunity to put it in their specials. So then it's an allocation of all those development, develop lots, and then the proportion of the newly proposed lots that had the sidewalk requirement imposed on them. So when you put the 50% together and then the, the cost allocation of the other 50%, that leaves us with the bulk of it.
Yeah, there's 95 lots in the existing Magnolia Hills Estates subdivision, and then 45 in this next, next group that were being assessed.
Thank you.
Hope that answers your question.
It does. I think it goes back to what Commissioner Hoppick mentioned earlier about, you know, ensuring that, you know, you know, what we do so this is, doesn't split out this way in the future.
Yeah, it seems like the last five years of dealing with the perimeter roads policy, it's now in there, and then it's also, in this area, actually, there are benefit districts set up for it, too, so it's, took a long time to get there, but we now have that, at least as a requirement to have. to have a sidewalk as a part of the development every time there's a plat now, basically.
Thank you. If there aren't any further questions for Mr. Stack, I'll open it up to members of the public. Anyone have a question or a comment on this item? I don't see any takers online either, so I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, move approval of resolution number 21-7957.
Second.
We have a motion to approve resolution number 21-7957. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. All right, we don't have any, I have to get back to my, my agenda here. We don't have any development business. Is there any other business that a commissioner would like to bring up this afternoon? All right, then if not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll see you back here on the 21st.